Good morning and welcome, everyone. Today is Tuesday, August 9th, and it is 9:02, so we will call this meeting to order. We'd ask those who are present if you are both willing and able to stand for the invocation delivered by Pastor Debbie Garrett of Open Door Homeless Resource Center, which should be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Pastor, thank you for being here.
Thank you. Let us bow our heads. Heavenly Father, we are gathered here today to say thank you for waking us up this morning, allowing us to sleep peacefully last night, fully clothed and in our right minds with all health and strength. Father, today we lift up to you our Mayor Brandon Whipple and the City Council leaders of Wichita. It is our prayer that they work together with all integrity and transparency as they serve the communities they each represent. Lord, search their hearts and remove all bitterness, resentment, prejudice, and racism from them so that they may effectively serve this city, bless and protect their families from all evil. Father, we lift up to you our interim Police Chief Lynn Moore, our police officers, firefighters, and other frontline workers and their families as they put their own lives on a line to help keep our city safe. Father, we know that only you are omniscient and omnipresent, all-knowing and everywhere. So send forth your warring angels to stand at the gates of this city, to protect our students as they return to the classroom on Friday, to protect us from COVID-19 and whatever else the enemy would try to use to harm us in large numbers. Now, Lord, help us to remember the less fortunate, those struggling with mental illness and the homeless in our communities. In Jesus' mighty name we pray. Amen.
At my allegiance, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor. Madam Clerk?
Approve the minutes of the regular meeting of August 2nd, 2022, and the special meeting of August 4th, 2022.
As every member had a chance to review the minutes, and if so, is there any discussion? If there is no discussion, then I will make a motion to accept both meeting minutes. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded by Vice Mayor Tuttle. Clerk will open a roll. Members cast their vote. Ever receive seven yea votes? That motion does pass. Madam Clerk?
Proclamations, Hispanic Heritage Month.
If you're here to receive the proclamation for Hispanic Heritage Month, please make way to the front. Oh, and feel free to bring that baby. You don't have to, though. You don't have to. Proclamation of the City of Wichita, Kansas, founded in 1870. Whereas, Congress has authorized the President to issue annually a proclamation designating September 15th through October 15th as National Hispanic Heritage Month, known in Spanish as Mesde Er Encia Hispania. Is that good? The observation initially began in 1968 as Hispanic Heritage Week and was expanded in 1988 to cover the month at which it is celebrated today. And whereas, the City of Wichita looks forward to celebrating Hispanic Heritage Month with the greater community to highlight the rich heritage, arts, histories, food, music, and traditions of all 26-plus Latin American nations. And whereas, Latinos are individuals that are descendants from Latin American countries and may speak a variety of different languages. Hispanics are individuals that speak Spanish and are descendants from Spanish-speaking countries. And whereas, the City of Wichita recognizes the significant contributions of all Hispanic city employees, the numerous grassroots leaders and outreach groups that help increase cultural awareness, education, enrichment, and community engagement with our residents. It is through their support and community involvement that our city has continued to become more culturally diverse and a welcoming city for all. And now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Brandon Whipple, Mayor of the City of Wichita, Kansas, along with the Wichita City Council, do hereby proclaim September 15th through October 15th, 2022, as Hispanic Heritage Month.
I won't be long. I just want to thank Mayor Whipple and the rest of the City Council members for this incredible opportunity to celebrate Hispanic Heritage Month here in Wichita. I think in an effort to be more inclusive, it's important that we recognize and celebrate contributions of Hispanic-American champions who have inspired others to achieve success. Thank you.
Let's go ahead and make a motion to adjourn. Madam Clerk?
Awards, Supplier Diversity Awards.
So if you're here to receive an award for the Supplier Diversity Award, please make your way to the front. Oh, I'm so glad more folks showed up. If not, the City Manager would have to collect all of these, so. So today, I'm pleased to acknowledge the City Departments that have met or exceeded the 2021 Goals for Spending with Emerging and Disadvantaged Business Enterprises. The City of Wichita is committed to the development and support of emerging and disadvantaged business enterprises, including minority and women-owned businesses. This not only provides opportunities for these vendors, but it also helps expand our vendor pool and thus reduce the price the city pays for goods and services. Purchasing staff work with community partners on vendor outreach and training. They help small businesses learn how to do business with the city. A new small business resource site providing information from area support organizations went live in the fall of 2021. The site is workwith.wichita.gov. EBE and DBE vendors can also receive more information by contacting the purchasing office at 268-4300. In 2021, the city purchased over $41 million in goods and services from EBE and DBE firms. That represents over 16% of dollars spent by the city. Today, I want to recognize and thank the following departments that exceeded their goals in 2021 to continue to help make the program a success. So when I call your department, please step forward out and I'll hand you your award. City Manager. Oh, no, I'll bring it to you, Bob. Finance Department. Housing and Community Service. Human Resources. Human Resources. Get that one to Bob. Metropolitan Area Building and Construction Department. Parks and Recreation. Public Works and Utilities. Public Works Water Utilities. Look at Alan stacking these up. Wichita Transit. Just want to thank all of our employees for the great work they do and also congratulation on this award. Thank you.
Big smiles.
There we go. Three, two, one. Thank you.
Madam Clerk?
Public Agenda, Stacy Crass, Decriminalization of Marijuana.
All right, as we roll into our public agenda, just a reminder that you have five minutes and you can pretty much talk about what you signed up to talk about. However, if you are looking to interact with the council, we ask the council to not answer questions or interact until you get through your full five minutes so that you have your time. So with that, is Stacy here? If not, we will skip Stacy for this moment. Madam Clerk?
David Braddock, Suspend Accepting New Cases Under the City's New Anti-Discrimination Laws.
All right. And David, we ask to say your name and as much as your address as you're comfortable saying per our ordinance.
Certainly. My name is David Brack. I'm currently a resident of Wichita, Kansas, but temporarily residing in Park City. Six months ago, Wichita's nondiscrimination ordinance went into effect. While one of the speakers recommended the city not pass the ordinance, I was unfortunately one of the first people to file a case under that ordinance. Pastor Gates, at that time, was the only member of the advisory board voting against passing the amendment. If you review his testimony to the City Council, his argument was simply to use those funds earmarked for the ordinance, instead hire paralegals to help file anti-discrimination cases under Kansas law, not under the ordinance that was created. My experience with my case has led me to believe that hiring paralegals would have been a much better thing to do as opposed to create this whole legal process. In my case, in many cases, if binding arbitration fails, as in my case, the city attorney's office becomes the investigator, the prosecutor, the jury, the judge, and the enforcer. I filed a request to unseal all Wichita Discrimination Ordinance cases using a Kansas Open Records Act. Currently, all complaints have to be filed by paper. None of my records have been retrieved online, even indicating the names of the parties involved. On the day I filed my complaint, I was told several other cases were ahead of mine. When my case was filed, the city attorney personally sealed it pending adjudication, even though the defendant nor myself requested it sealed. The ordinance does not grant the authority for anyone to seal these public records. All of the Wichita Discrimination Ordinance complaints also appear to have been sealed. My core request was officially denied on August 4th as no records exist, which is incorrect, since I know at least I have a case. Now, I filed my case under the Wichita Discrimination Ordinance instead of Kansas State solely due to the education clause. I entered the binding arbitration process with an email from the defendant confirming that everything done against me was against their policies. While not an admission of guilt, the arbitration process did fail, not because there's any disagreement over the facts, but because my request for them to do training and education was beyond the scope that they wanted to do. My core request was to unseal my complaint and all the others determined this ordinance had any effect, if it's been successful, or as in my fears, creating an undue burden on the Law Department to process what's become an entirely new legal process. Ms. Magna can provide you with the number of hours she and her team have devoted just to my case, which you can then use to extrapolate the costs incurred for all the other cases also filed. I also assert that those costs have never were sized into the scope of the financial impact of the city when the ordinance was first passed. If my denial of core records is correct, then there generally are no records, then all the Wichita discriminations filed must still be sealed, implying none have been resolved in the six months since ordinance was passed. I'd like to officially request that my and all records relating to other Wichita discrimination ordinances complaints be unsealed today. The public can then determine the ordinance's effectiveness, whether it needs to remain in place as written, modified, or withdrawn. Until we can see these public records, I'd like to formally request the City of Wichita also suspend accepting any new complaints until the public disclosures to the backlog of cases can be seen to be determined if the city has the capacities to fill the requirements mandated by the ordinance. Thank you for allowing me raise the concerns to the council. I know my time is virtually up, but I did want to give you some additional information. Ms. Magna did have these statements ahead of time and has provided me with some additional information that she can probably serve with you today if you'd like to know regarding my case and all the other cases. Thank you for your time.
Councilmember Johnson?
Thanks, Mayor. I appreciate you coming this morning. Just a clarifying question. So you feel that because you have a discrepancy in your case and you want to unseal that just to see your records, that someone who may not know you, who went through their own process, and maybe didn't want to publicly be outed in a discrimination case, they should be outed?
Well, essentially, if someone is publicly arrested, the arrest is a public record. Any process in that case is a public record. The fact that you can't even find names of plaintiffs and defendants and those are sealed is bizarre. Even just the act of me filing the case should have been a public record, but because right now to file the case, you have to do it on paper, print it out, and either hand-deliver it to a secured office on the City Hall office, you have to get permission to access or mail it by registered mail. Because there's no digital records, nothing has ever been digitized, even in my case, made public. I'm not asking that all the contents of all the records be unsealed, because that's not part of the public record. Now, my case, because I worked with multiple attorneys, I did have my entire case presented as a public record as part of the case filing, which I would like to be unsealed. Neither myself nor the defendant said that they would not like that unsealed. It's just a matter of why the city has sealed it.
Thank you. No further questions?
Thank you.
Madam Clerk?
Ron Rosales, Pat Garcia Park and Surrounding Infrastructure.
Good morning and welcome.
Morning, Mayor Whipple, Vice Mayor Tuttle, members of the council. My name is Ron Rosales. I live at 2349 North Market. I'm here today to bring attention to the Pat Garcia Park in North Wichita, specifically on the corner of 25th and Park Place. Currently, this park has not been developed. Nevertheless, there are members in the community who are hopeful that this will be developed with the goal of a Hispanic veterans memorial built there on-site. The park will not only have a typical playground and memorial, but also an obstacle course playground that people can use as well as pets, if people want to bring their pets over and run them around the park. As a retired Navy veteran, I speak on behalf of the many veterans that have come out of the Mexican-American community on the north side of Wichita, with it just considered within the heart of the Barrio neighborhood, that there have been veterans serving our community and country since World War II. And also consider that just within this small neighborhood, and when I say the Barrio, historically, it was from 25th North to 21st and from Broadway to Arkansas, excuse me, Arkansas, man. No, I am from Wichita, seriously. So, but consider just within that small area, there have been Purple Heart Bronze Medal recipients, Army Ranger that fought in Morel's Marauders, World War II POW, and a current US Army officer by the name of Esteban Contreras. With that said, please consider appropriating funds for the development of Pat Garcia Park soon. During a meeting with Councilwoman Ballard, Commissioner Cruz, Two Park and Recs representatives, Robert Chavez, who is the organizer and kind of overseer over this endeavor, and myself, all met, and the issue of cost came up. And I just want to say that I can assure you that if you have the proper development within this community, specifically infrastructure from 13th Street, 21st, 25th, and 29th Street, this park and the infrastructure development will pay dividends. As you know, Governor Kelly was here last week talking about economic development, and I know that parks and artwork and all that, it's not, you know, it's not exactly tied into the economic development per se, but it does bring a lot of aesthetics, it brings a lot of interest and value to our community. So I just want to say that that's something that, you know, kind of goes hand-in-hand with the development of the park. Lastly, my father and my brothers were very active in our community and unfortunately didn't see a lot of development, and they became very distrustful of the City Council, of the government itself, unfortunately, and they died, didn't see much being developed within our community. And, you know, their generation is either dead or dying, and so we, myself and Mr. Chavez, felt that this would be a great opportunity, especially now that we have the proclamation of Hispanic Heritage Month, that this would be something that we could show the next generation of the people who came before, especially the veterans, because, as you know, and you probably have World War II veterans or Vietnam veterans that you know, and a lot of them are very modest. And so it is very, very important to us that we have something to remember them by and to teach the next generation that's coming up. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Did Stacy make it in? Stacy Crass. Madam Clerk?
Consent Agenda Items 1 through 17.
Is there a discussion on Consent Agenda Items 1 through 17? If there is no discussion, then I will make the motion to accept the consent agenda as it's presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Vice Mayor Tuttle. Clerk will open a roll. Members cast their vote. Ever receive seven yea votes? That motion does pass. Madam Clerk?
Report Board Bids and Contracts Dated August 8th, 2022.
Good morning.
Good morning, Mayor and City Council. Josh Lawber, Department of Finance. The August 8th, 2022 Board of Bids and Recommendations are as follows. Item number one for engineering is sanitary sewer improvements, Phase Four, for Schultz-Johnson Second Edition, for NOAC Construction Company Incorporated, in the amount of $2,583,542, subject to your approval on August 16th of a new engineer's estimate and budget authorization. Next item is Auburn Hills T3 Pond Bank Repair, Phase Two, for Don Linger &amp; Sons Construction Company Incorporated, in the amount of $74,303, subject to September 6th, your new, your approval of a new engineer's estimate and budget authorization. Next item is the Amaden Bridge at Arkansas River for King Construction Company Incorporated, in the amount of $9,80998, subject to your approval of new engineer estimate and budget authorization, 8/23. For purchasing, we have the interior and exterior modification of two residential sites, deferring that to August 15th. We have the thermal imaging camera for Conrad fire equipment in the amount of $88,207.20. This is how to become a vendor with the City of Wichita. These are our current open requests for proposals, and I recommend to approve the bid with the
Heritage Month, that this would be something that we could show the next generation of the people who came before, especially the veterans. Because, as you know, and you probably have World War II veterans or Vietnam veterans that you know, and a lot of them are very modest. And so it is very, very important to us that we have something to remember them by and to teach the next generation that's coming up. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Did Stacy make it in? Stacy Crass. Madam Clerk.
Consent Agenda Items 1 through 17.
Is there a discussion on consent agenda items 1 through 17? If there is no discussion, then I will make the motion to accept the consent agenda as it's presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Vice Mayor Tuttle. Clerk will open a roll. Members cast the vote. Ever receive seven yay votes, that motion does pass. Madam Clerk.
Report of Board of Bids and Contracts Dated August 8, 2022.
Good morning.
Good morning, Mayor and City Council. Josh Lauber, Department of Finance. The August 8, 2022 Board of Bids and Recommendations are as follows. Item number one for engineering is sanitary sewer improvements, Phase Four for Schultz-Johnson Second Edition for NOAC Construction Company Incorporated in the amount of $2,583,542, subject to your approval on August 16 of a new engineer's estimate and budget authorization. Next item is Auburn Hills T3 Pond Bank Repair, Phase Two for Don Linger and Sons Construction Company Incorporated in the amount of $74,303, subject to September 6, your new, your approval of a new engineer's estimate and budget authorization. Next item is the Amadon Bridge at Arkansas River for King Construction Company Incorporated in the amount of $9,800,998, subject to your approval of new engineer estimate and budget authorization, 823. For purchasing, we have the interior and exterior modification of two residential sites, deferring that to August 15. We have the thermal imaging camera for Conrad Fire Equipment in the amount of $88,207.20. This is how to become a vendor with the City of Wichita. These are current open requests for proposals, and I recommend to approve the bid words as presented.
Are there questions for staff? See none? Thank you. Is there input from the public on this item? See none. We'll bring discussion back to the bench. Further discussion on this item? If there is no further discussion, then I'll make the motion to accept staff's recommended action to receive and file the report, approve the contracts, and authorize the necessary signatures. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Vice Mayor Tuttle. Clerk will open a roll. Members cast the vote. Ever receive seven yay votes, that motion does pass. Madam Clerk.
Public Hearing and Request for a Letter of Intent to Issue Industrial Revenue Bonds, ICT 21 LLC.
Good morning.
Good morning, Mayor and City Council members. I'm Tim Goodpasture with the City's Office of Economic Development for the record. The item before you today is a request for a letter of intent to issue industrial revenue bonds for a speculative industrial building. ICT 21, back to some history on the speculative industrial program. In December of 2017, the city council approved the speculative industrial program, which requires developers to build a minimum of 100,000 square feet, which is not divisible below 25,000 square feet. Minimum clear height has to be 28 feet, and tilt-up concrete is preferred for the construction materials. The developers must start construction within 120 days of the city council approval and complete the project within 15 months of council approval. The developers must use industrial revenue bonds to achieve a 95% abatement for the first five years, and if the project is at least 50% leased at the five-year mark, it would achieve a 50% abatement for the second five years. There would be no abatement for the land. Currently, there have been eight projects that were approved by the city council under this policy. Five are fully completed and 100% leased. Three are currently under construction. One is at Webb Industrial, which is at 40th Street North, and Tobin, which is near 40th and Webb Road, which is 140,000 square foot building, and then two buildings at 21st and I-135 as part of the ICT 21 project, which are both 180,000 square feet, one of which is nearing completion right now, the second of which has footings and foundations being poured. All of these projects have reported strong leasing activity. ICT 21 LLC is a limited liability corporation that is comprised of members Ron and Marty Cornejo, Matt Poulson, and Morgan Kuhn. It intends to build a third speculative warehouse at a size of 195,000 square feet with a total investment in excess of $20.6 million. The project is located at 21st Street North and I-135. They are requesting a letter of intent in an amount not to exceed $20,620,000. The city and ICT 21 entered into a development agreement in February of this year, which requires the developer to achieve a certificate of occupancy on three industrial buildings in this particular project, the first of which should be by October of this year, the second of which would be by August of 2023, and the third of which would be by July of 2024. Approval of this third speculative industrial building keeps them on track to achieve all of those required metrics. The area outlined here in red is where the site is located. 21st Street is running from left to right in this aerial towards the bottom of the aerial. I-135 is a little bit right of center, and again, this is the northwest corner of 21st Street North and I-135. The site was originally developed as the Derby Oil Company in 1920 as a refinery. While it did trade hands through many companies, it was operated as a refinery until 1993, when it was converted to an asphalt blending facility. In 2004, the El Paso Merchant Energy Petroleum Company initiated demolition of this facility because it was very environmentally contaminated. In 2012, El Paso Merchant Energy Petroleum Company notified the Kansas Department of Health and Environment of its intent to sell the refinery, including the environmental liability, to Environmental Liability Transfer Incorporated. Environmental Liability Transfer Incorporated has retained the liability and continues remediation to this day. This allows for the land to be sold and developed without any liability for future owners. This is a site plan for the site at 21st and I-135. The buildings that are not grayed out in white are the buildings that have been approved and are under consideration today for the speculative industrial program. The two buildings that look like an equal sign are the first two 180,000 square foot buildings that have been approved for speculative industrial buildings, and the one on the north side of that is the one under consideration today. This is an architectural rendering of what the third building would look like at 21st and I-135. The estimated value of one years of a 95% property tax abatement based on an investment of $20 million is approximately $598,000, with the city's share being approximately $160,000. It is of note that this building does not exist today, so these are not taxes that are currently being collected and being diverted. These are taxes that do not exist today. A cost-benefit analysis was conducted by the Center for Economic Development and Business Research at Wichita State University, which showed an overall ratio of benefits to costs of 1.40 to 1 for the city overall, 1.20 to 1 for the city's general fund, and 2.03 to 1 for the city's debt service fund. Therefore, it is staff's recommendation that the city council close the public hearing, adopt the resolution of intent, and authorize the necessary signatures. Ron and Marty Cornejo of ICT 21 LLC are here and can answer any questions specific to the project, and I would be happy to answer any questions as well.
Thank you, Tim. Questions for staff? See none? Is there input from the public on this item? See none. We'll bring discussion back to the bench. Further discussion on this item? Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. I just wanted to say again that, one, our spec policy has been great as we continue to hear, and the revitalization of this site has been amazing. I remember the refinery as a kid, and it looks much better over there now, so just appreciate the continued development and vision for this area.
Further discussion. Councilmember Blubow.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate the continuity of this program. I know with escalating building costs and everything, I'm sure you're being affected by those, so I appreciate you proceeding with your plan.
Further discussion? If there is no further discussion, the chair recognizes Councilmember Ballard as this item falls within District 6.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Tim, for the presentation. I would just piggyback on everything that my colleague said. Thank you for continuing to work so hard on this program, and thank you both for being here today, too. So with that, I move that we close the public hearing, adopt the resolution of intent, and authorize the necessary signatures.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Vice Mayor Tuttle. Clerk will open a roll. Members cast the vote. Ever receive seven yay votes, that motion does pass. Madam Clerk.
Ordinance Authorizing Use of Hyatt Fund Proceeds.
Good morning, Mayor and City Council.
Good morning.
Tasha Hayes from the Office of Community Services. Just a little background on this item. On September 5, 2017, the city council adopted ordinance of the city code, which authorized the use of Hyatt Regency Wichita sale proceeds to fund projects in all six council districts. Subsequently, ordinance have authorized additional projects and allocations. District 1's allocation of funds has not yet been fully utilized. The proposed ordinance allocates $114,777 to three District 1 projects. The proposed Project 1 is a contribution of $79,080, which would be dedicated to District 1 Neighborhood Grant Program. The grants from this program will be available for one-time projects located in District 1 with a limit of $1,500 per project. A review committee will select and implement projects that will benefit residents via sidewalk repairs, emergency tree trimming, eliminating deed issues to establish legal home ownership, and special projects considered on case-by-case basis. Proposed Project Number 2 is a 1,500 contribution that would go to the Kansas Aviation Museum to support the Black Aviators exhibit, in particular, the contributions of Mr. Gooch, better known as Rip Gooch. Mr. Gooch is a well-known politician and aviation entrepreneur. Gooch served in the Wichita area as both Wichita City Council member and as a Kansas State Senator from the late 1800s to the early 2000s, and continued to be a voice for the community well after his retirement. Proposed Project Number 3 is a contribution of $20,697, which would be dedicated to programs and initiatives that include Summer Evening Recreation Program and Community Day Program. These programs will focus on improving the health and well-being of individuals, contributing to the empowerment of individuals, and promoting the develop of inclusive communities. It is recommended that the city council place the ordinance on the first reading and authorize the necessary signatures. And with that, I stand with any questions.
Questions for staff? See none? Thank you. Is there input from the public on this item? If there is no input from the public, we'll bring discussion back to the bench. Is there further discussion on this item? See none. The chair recognizes Councilmember Johnson of District 1.
Thanks, Mayor. Thanks, Tasha. I am excited about this for a number of reasons. I've had many District 1 residents ask about the District 1 grant coming back, and having the funds to be able to do that and help out so many people like we have been doing is exciting. And the Black Aviators exhibit at the Kansas Aviation Museum is something that former Councilmember Gooch did not let me forget about for years, and made sure that I went out there and checked it out and all the great work that they're doing, and always talked about Councilmember Fry serving as well. So it's an honor to be able to help out with that in his passing, and really highlight how great of an individual he was. And our Summer Evening Rec program regularly saw 50 or more young people when we were doing that a couple of years ago. So excited to be able to fund those and provide those opportunities for the community. So with that, I would move that the council place the ordinance on first reading and authorize the necessary signatures.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded by Vice Mayor Tuttle. Clerk will open a roll. Members cast the vote. Ever receive seven yay votes, that motion does pass. Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Appointments and Comments.
All right. Let's start off with appointments. Councilmember Fry?
Thank you. As indicated last week, my intent, I would like to appoint Paul Kitchen to the Citizens Review Board.
Further appointments? If there are no further appointments, then, oh, Councilmember Ballard.
Thank you. I'd like to reappoint Jerry Gray to the Cultural Funding Committee.
Further appointments? If there's no further appointments, I'll make the motion to accept those appointments.
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Vice Mayor Tuttle. Clerk will open a roll. Members cast the vote. Ever receive seven yay votes, those, motion does pass. Onto comments for the group. Councilmember Hoheisel.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to say that we are having our second district breakfast this upcoming Saturday. Special guest, my colleague Maggie Ballard, will be our guest of honor there. That's at the New Life Christian Church, or Christian Faith Center, I'm sorry, 1130 South Broadway, 9:30 this Saturday. So I welcome everybody to come on out, and if you, I'll even pay for breakfast if you show up, so.
Further comments? See no further comments. With that, I make a motion at the city council recess into executive session for 40 minutes to receive information on a civil case pursuant to KSA 754319 for illegal consultation with the city attorney, which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship about pending litigation and legal advice. The executive session is required to protect attorney-client privilege and the public interest. So again, it's for 40 minutes. That's the motion, and we'll start at 9:45.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded by Vice Mayor Tuttle. Clerk will open a roll. Ever receive seven yay votes, that motion does pass.